2017 to order, roll call please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Tonight, we have the honor of having Troop 316 with us tonight. I would ask that they lead us in the pledge, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, boys. Approval of minutes, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of 11:21 first? We'll do them separately. Motion. Kurkowski, go ahead, Ken.
I will move to approve minutes of November 21st, 2017.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And now if you'd please take a look at the minutes of 12:05:17. Any corrections, objections? If none, motion please.
Kurkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of December 5th, 2017.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item number four is informational only. We have with us tonight Josh Rich, and he will provide the council with some information regarding his project Helen's Wish. Welcome, Josh.
Hi. Do you want me to say where I live and my name?
Please.
Alright, Josh Rich, and I live 3270 East Carrollton Drive. Good evening, my name again is Joshua Rich, and I'm a resident of this community and a member of Boy Scout Troop 218 here in Oak Creek. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Bakovich, and the common council body for allowing me the opportunity to share Helen's Wish with you this evening. The basic idea of Helen's Wish is to have a wider stoop from the attached garage into the home. I believe you will find this following information helpful for you as elected officials to take into consideration with proposed residential construction projects. I've learned a lot with my research and presentations in front of Franklin Common Council and as a guest speaker at the Milwaukee County Board of Aging. One piece of information I believe you'll find informative and appreciative is the structure of our population is shifting and aging. The baby boomers, those born between 1946 and 1964, started turning 65 in 2011, and the number of older people increased dramatically during the 2014-2030 period. The older population in 2030 is projected to be twice as large, growing from 35 million to 74 million, and representing nearly 21% of the total US population. This means one out of every five individuals we come in contact in 2030 will be considered a senior citizen. This will have a huge impact on our society. Please consider a proposal that acknowledges safety and accommodation for the elderly and those individuals with physical limitations. I'll refer to my proposal as Helen's Wish. My late grandmother, Helen Chrisnovich, passed away on August 23rd this year at 99 years young, and resided in Franklin, Wisconsin. My grandmother often came over to visit us and never had issues entering our home with her walker from our attached garage. That is because when my parents built their home, they built a stoop that was deeper front to back. Later, as my grandmother got older, her physical abilities became more challenging, as it does for many seniors. Last Christmas, as she entered our home, she tapped on the step for her stoop and said, "I only wish with all the laws and codes they have, there'd be some to make it safer for individuals like me tend to leave the home." I don't like going out now as much to visit others at their homes, because I dread the thought of using my walker, trying to maintain my balance, open the person's door, and then try to get up that last step without falling. It's not easy for me and is probably a struggle for many others. After she said this, I understood her concern and asked my father to assist me in doing some research and talk to contractors, engineers, and medical equipment suppliers. We discovered there are no building code requirements in ADA or American Disability Act for residential homes. We learned that some of the newer home designs being built today have plans if the site allows where the elevation of the home and garage is the same elevation where no step is required, which is ideal. We learned ramps may seem like the best idea, but is not practical, because ADA specs require for every one inch of rise, the length of the ramp must be one foot, so with the step rise being normally seven inches in height, the total height would be then 14 inches, which would require a 14-foot ramp in length, which would not be practical. The most common design with home construction projects built today with attached garages is one to two steps to enter the home. As my grandmother told me, if you don't think this is a challenge, then try it sometime. Clutch onto your walker, lift your leg, and then try opening the door and entering the home. I'm not a gymnast, but this routine may qualify. This concern does not only apply to seniors, but others who may have physical challenges and need walkers, crutches, or other equipment. My hope is one day residential building codes will be changed. I'm asking today for your guidance and support. If you feel this issue is valid, please join me in finding a way to share this with others who are proposing to build new homes or adding attached garages in our community. Our efforts today may help address this issue with your generation and future generations alike. In closing, as elected officials and members of this community, and I as a Boy Scout, we have a common mission, that is to pledge and serve the needs of our community whenever the opportunity allows. I see this first step of your listening considering my proposal as Helen's Wish as one opportunity to do just that. I appreciate and thank you again in allowing me this time to share this concern, and look forward to your thoughts, and would like to wish your family a Merry Christmas. I'd be happy at this time to hear your thoughts and answer any of your questions.
Well, thank you, Josh. Obviously, you're very passionate about it. Your grandmother meant a great deal to you, and you've done your homework on this without a doubt. You are correct. Many of us will be at that point sometime in our lifetime and need that help. Our current codes are set by the state, so our building inspector, electrical, plumbing, things of that nature follow the state code. So all ADA codes are governed in commercial and public buildings. If you look around here at the outlet heights and switch heights, elevators, ramps, things of that nature, they've been applied there, they haven't put them in residential homes yet. Again, that is a state call. So I guess I would advise to anybody, I mean, you could talk to home builders and get their input, and that may be a very worthwhile additive for somebody to put in their home at very little cost, it would pay dividends later on. So those are my thoughts of it. I'm very impressed by your presentation, and I thank you for your time. Anyone else, council? Steve?
I was just impressed on how articulate you were. Is this something that's not allowed, or is this something an option that a homeowner can do if they know they're gonna have a potential problem? Does our building codes not allow the longer steps? How does that work?
It would be allowed, it would be an option, but when a home builder does it, they put in the usual 10-inch step, you know, into the garage. It's typically what I have in my home. But again, depending on cost and need, a homeowner can do whatever he chooses within his home. So you may see homes, if you observe the outlets, they're not at a normal 12-inch height, they're probably at about 18 to center, 24 to center these days, along with the switches. Now, if you have an individual that has those needs at home, you may put that in your own home for personal use if you have that need.
I think if the direction we're sending him in is to talk to our state senator and our assemblyman, then I would probably keep us all in the loop. I would certainly like to endorse your effort if we have to go to the state with this issue, because I think this is something really neat. Yes, I just turned 60, so I imagine someday I'm gonna be there myself, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike?
Thanks for the effort. Awesome. I'm really impressed. Sometimes, some of the simplest ideas that make common sense come forward, and you're a part of that. You know, as far as the state making that call, in the end, that probably would be a state matter, but at the local level, I think we could endorse this maybe through a, and I realize tonight it's informational, but maybe moving forward, we could do this as a resolution, as an appeal to the state, because I think it makes a lot of sense.
Sure. That's your direction?
So would that be the direction of resolution appealing to the state for this change?
We can look into it further. That would be the direction.
Yeah? I would support that 100%. Makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Josh. Appreciate it. And we will let you know if we do the resolution, we'll have the clerk email you out the results of it if we go that action, okay? Great. Next up, we have a few recognitions. Item number five is a council proclamation to Daniel Yan, who served on our Park and Recs Commission. Catherine, would you please read that?
Certainly. Council proclamation number 17-12 to Daniel Han for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. Whereas Daniel Han was appointed to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission on May 6th, 2003, and has served for over 14 years. And whereas Daniel Han has resigned from the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission effective November 15th, 2017. And whereas during his tenure on the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission, Daniel Han contributed to the review and adoption of the Aben Shyne Park Master Plan and the Park and Open Space Plan. And whereas Parks Recreation and Forestry has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Daniel Han for his dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. Be it further resolved that the proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Daniel Han. Introduced this 19th day of December, 2017.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to congratulate Dan for serving our city, sharing his expertise and knowledge. He was invaluable in moving some of the park projects forward the last few years. I had the pleasure of serving with him. He was a great addition to the city. Anyone else have anything for Daniel? Okay, motion?
Mr. Kurkowski will make a motion to accept proclamation number 17-12 to Daniel Yan for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item number six is another proclamation for Mary Ann Dickman for dedicated service as a member of the Park and Rec and Forestry Commission. Catherine, would you please read that?
Council proclamation number 17-13 to Mary Ann Dickman for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. Whereas Mary Ann Dickman was appointed as a member of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission on February 1990 and served in the capacity for over 27 years. And whereas Mary Ann Dickman's tenure gave her valuable insight into the issues faced by the city and the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. Whereas Mary Ann Dickman has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. And whereas the City of Oak Creek has benefited from her contributions over the years, including the formulation, adoption, and implementation of important documents such as the Aben Shyne Community Park Master Plan and the City of Oak Creek Park and Open Space Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Mary Ann Dickman for her dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Mary Ann Dickman. Introduced at a regular meeting of the common council of the City of Oak Creek held this 19th day of December, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. Again, I'd like to congratulate Mary Ann and thank her for her years of service, 27 years. This woman served the city on Park and Recs. Again, I had the privilege of serving with her. Her insight was invaluable. Over 27 years, she helped develop just about every city park. She touched just about every city park in the city, so my thanks to Mary Ann. Anybody else? Seeing none, motion?
Mr. Kurkowski will make a motion to accept council proclamation number 17-13 to Mary Ann Dickman for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Next, we have another council proclamation to Walter Dickman for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Plan Commission. Catherine?
Council proclamation number 17-14 to Walter Dickman for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Plan Commission. Whereas Walter Dickman was appointed to the Plan Commission in May 1988. And whereas the growth of the community since that time has presented many challenges and opportunities to the city and its residents. Whereas a member of the Plan Commission, Walter Dickman has always shown excellent judgment in balancing the concerns of neighborhood residents and the overall benefit to the community. And whereas during his tenure on the Plan Commission, Walter Dickman was involved in the adoption of the city's comprehensive plan 2002, and establishment of TIF districts, and various updates to the city zoning code. And whereas Walter Dickman has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. And whereas Walter Dickman has regrettably chosen to step down from the Plan Commission after over 29 years of dedicated service. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the City of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Walter Dickman for his guidance and dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Plan Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Walter Dickman. Introduced and adopted this 19th day of December, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. And again, my thanks and gratitude goes out to Wally Dickman. He served again on this commission for just short of 30 years, which is amazing. I had the pleasure of serving with him for the last 10 on the Plan Commission. Again, Wally's seen this city through the early phases of what it was to what it is. He'll greatly be missed. I do want to share something with you. The last proclamation was Mary Ann Dickman, so they retired together and they traveled quite a bit. Together, they had just short of 97 years of service to the City of Oak Creek on boards and commission. That is amazing public service by one couple, and something that should go unnoticed. Mr. Dickman, Wally wrote me a note, and I just want to share some of it with you. He said, "He's made his decision, his final meeting was gonna be November 28th, 2017." He discussed that with me prior to it. He said, "It's been quite an experience serving the citizens of Oak Creek during the last 30 years," and he served 10 years prior to that on the Parks Commission. He had 40 years of service, on top of Mary Ann's 27. "Many factors entered into his decision, but he thought it was appropriate, especially considering the expertise of other Plan Commissioners, the mayor's guidance, and the great support of the community development department and the engineering departments. The development of the City of Oak Creek in the last few years has been nothing short of stunning." He wishes us continued success for all citizens of the City of Oak Creek, and signed Walter Wally Dickman. Classy individual. Very classy individual. So again, Wally, thank you very much. Anybody want to add to it? Steve?
Mayor, it's important to note that this is all done as volunteers, too.
Yes.
Not one cent of money was paid to these guys, these folks.
Well, actually, a Plan Commission does get a small fee, but I'll tell you what, Wally probably didn't amount to $10,000 over 40 years as a Plan Commission, and I'm probably being super generous at that. Chris?
The time and effort that both of the Dickmans put in, I've had the luxury of knowing the Dickmans. Their daughter actually was in our wedding, so we were married actually in May of 1988, my wife and I, so we're gonna go on 30 years, just like Wally was gonna be with a Plan Commission. So, point is, is that Wally's leaving the Plan Commission, but him and Mary Ann are gonna have a great retirement together. They have a lot going on in their lives, so they're young at heart, for sure. I don't know how they keep up the energy, but they do, so they're great families.
You're correct. City's a better place for having them in. Anyone else? If not, motion please. Oh, I'm sorry. Doug?
You know, a lot has been said about Wally and Mary Ann, and what they've meant to this community, and so I won't reiterate that, but I think as you look as Plan Commissioners, present and future, the balance that Wally brought to that in terms of recognizing the needs and desires of the community while at the same time looking towards the general good and the greater purpose and vision of this community, and think about how he's done that for three decades. He's really set this community up in a position to succeed, and I can only hope that whoever replaces, and he really can't replace Wally on the commission, but whoever fills that seat has those same traits and listens as well as Wally did.
You're correct. And at Plan Commission, Wally typically did all the minutes for us, and the first meeting, he wasn't there. We went for the minutes, and everybody turned and looked like we didn't know what to do without Wally, so we managed to figure it out. Arden, would you like to say something?
Arden Digner, 8540 South Pennsylvania, I've been amazed at the dedication of Wally, because the Plan Commission usually twice a month gets multiples of 50 pages of, sometimes three times that, of documents that they have to take a look at and approve. And what always surprised me is that whenever there was a question about how it affects the community, zoning, or a group, Wally would, in his comments, would say, "I saw this, and I feel that this would fit or not fit in the community." And I thought that kind of dedication on the part of a Plan Commission member was outstanding, and it happened a number of times. So, believe me, an individual who was part of this community for his lifetime, and dedicated to it, and was concerned about it, and I appreciate so much that kind of dedication.
Thank you, Arden. It means a lot. If no one else has comments, motion please.
Mr. Kurkowski will make a motion to accept council proclamation number 17-14 to Walter Dickman for dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek as a member of the Plan Commission.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And number eight is a proclamation to our latest Eagle Scout. Catherine?
Council proclamation number 17-15, congratulations to Samuel J. Koneski for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas such award is an earned award in that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award. And whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve this goal. And whereas a court of honor to be held at the Oak Creek Public Library on January 5th, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM, an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Samuel J. Koneski. And whereas, as his Eagle project, Sam chose a project in the city's new library designing and building a 6-foot-by-8-foot jumbo illumination pegboard. In addition, Sam has also purchased and installed 56-inch interactive touchscreen tablet and constructed two custom checker and chess tables, all to be housed in the children's section at the Oak Creek Public Library. Whereas Sam, along with his volunteers led by him, raised over $7,000 in necessary finances needed to fund his project by hosting various fundraisers, which included silent auctions, car washes, and public presentations. And whereas Sam coordinated the efforts of many volunteers to assist with the construction and installation of the illumination pegboard, the interactive touchscreen tablet, and the checker and chess tables, putting in a total of 800 man-hours of work. Whereas thanks to Sam, hundreds, if not thousands, of children in the Oak Creek area can utilize these unique items in the Oak Creek Public Library, providing endless hours of entertainment, creativity, and learning possibilities. Whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Samuel J. Koneski. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Sam for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Samuel J. Koneski. Dated this 19th day of December, presented and adopted this 19th day of December, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. And again, our congratulations go out to him. Quite a worthwhile project, library. Want to say anything on his behalf, Jill?
I just wanted to add that Sam came to us several years ago before we were, while we were still in the old building, and wanted to do his Eagle Scout project, and wanted to do something to enhance the new building, and he knocked it out of the park. If any of you haven't had the opportunity, be sure to stop by the kids' department. The illumination pegboard that he created, the craftsmanship, it's amazing that it was created by a high school student as well, and his classmates. It's one of the centerpieces of our library, and it is definitely one of the defining features and one reason that people, not only from Oak Creek, but from across Milwaukee County and from across southeastern Wisconsin, come and use the Oak Creek Public Library. So, we're very happy that he chose to work with us, and we look forward to any other Eagle Scouts that might be looking for a future project.
Thank you, Jill. Again, any other comments?
Just how incredibly refreshing and encouraging it is to see that, you know, the youth of our community is really having a positive impact. Typically, it's those that don't do nice things that get all the press. So certainly, a well-deserved acknowledgement to Sam for his efforts, and again, he and those that were involved in the project with him, the future of our community certainly looks bright, as long as they continue to be a part of it. So, Sam, congratulations.
Thank you. No one else? Motion?
I will move to approve council proclamation 17-15, congratulations to Samuel J. Koneski for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
I realize we had quite a few proclamations, but it is a nice way to wrap up the year with things like that. Congratulations to everyone. Onto our public hearings. Item number nine is a proposed industrial development revenue bond financing from Marquette 13 LLC and Tower 13 LLC project. Are you set for that, Catherine?
I am. Public hearing number one, regarding the proposed issuance of City of Oak Creek, Wisconsin Industrial Development Revenue Bonds, Series 2017A and 2017B, Marquette 13 LLC and Tower 13 LLC project, in an aggregate amount not to exceed $7 million pursuant to Section 66.1103 of the Wisconsin statutes, to finance a multi-jurisdictional project on behalf of Marquette 13 LLC, a Wisconsin limited liability company. Tower 13 LLC, a Wisconsin limited liability company, and/or one or more related or affiliated entities, and/or one or more limited liability entities to be formed collectively, the borrower. Published November 29th, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. You're gonna take a little bit on this? Please.
Thank you, Mayor. So the council will recall that at its November 21st meeting, the council adopted the initial resolution regarding the issuance of these IRBs. This matters before you tonight for that public hearing, and the next item after the public hearing is consideration of a final resolution. So, to recap a little bit of the background, this project is involving two properties. It's a conduit issuance of IRBs. So this project is in the City of Milwaukee at 8501 West Tower Avenue. The business there is converted products, it's a paper converting business, and the project here in And the project here in Oak Creek is located at 303 Marquette Avenue. That is WS Packaging Group, Inc., involving their printing business. So, the bottom line is that this project will involve the purchase of land, rehabilitation, and improvements to the facilities, and in that regard, this issuance on behalf of the city is intended to assist with the development of those projects whereby we are literally the conduit. So, that means there is nothing that becomes an obligation of the city in terms of its general obligations. We're not liable for any principal and interest. There's no ongoing reporting responsibilities. It doesn't count against our borrowing capacity, all of those pieces. So, in that regard, this is a public hearing. We can come back with more comments when it comes time for consideration of the resolution, but this is the time for public comment, and I would turn it over back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, we will make three calls. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for questions and/or comments. Anyone?
Mayor Dan, at, I believe it was the last council meeting when this topic was brought up, I had asked a question if this had ever been done previously. Didn't quite understand if, why are we doing this? Because it doesn't directly involve our community or benefit the community. And it was explained that it was done with the Susie's Cream Cheesecake Building. So, is it, would it be accurate or then safe to say that this is a goodwill gesture that the city is doing with the hopes that it strengthens the relationship between the city and this business and would possibly promote future development by them in our community? I mean, is there a favor to ask of them later down the road somewhere?
I don't think it's a favor. I think it's being a good neighbor. As the lady said in her presentation, I mean, Milwaukee could have done this, but we're far more efficient at it and we're faster at the process. Milwaukee just has more things on the agenda and more process to go through, so this was really a way to get it done, and they did have a date, I believe by the end of the year to get it done. Not mistaken. So, they chose to reach out to Oak Creek as partnerships. Really what it is, is it's a goodwill gesture.
And it seems to be, it's a pretty huge favor or gesture on our behalf, correct?
Um, I mean, we're signing for it, but there's no financial impact, so.
But they wouldn't have gotten this done without us.
Correct. They could have petitioned someone else also. Since we're an adjoining community, they came to us. Yes. So, anyone else? We'll move on to item 10, the resolution of number 11893121917, a final resolution regarding the industrial development revenue bond financing for Marquette 13 LLC and Tower 13 LLC in the first. Questions? If not, motion.
Kurski will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11893-121917, final resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for Marquette 13 LLC and Tower 13 LLC project.
Bill will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'd like to just skip ahead of the public hearings for one second. Our labor attorney. Do we got to finish the public hearings? All right, Rob, got to go through them. Here, I was going to do them a favor for Christmas and everything, and I'm shot down. We'll go on to item 11. Consideration of Resolution Number 11899121917, a resolution authorizing amendments to 2,200,000 City of Oak Creek, Wisconsin Industrial Development Revenue Bonds, Series 2014. Yes, would you?
Thank you. I should almost turn this over to Alderman Dukenyak, since he was the one who mentioned Susie's Cream Cheesecakes. So, points for Alderman Dukenyak. This is a resolution, just as the mayor said, a matter that the council has seen before. In fact, there was a modification of this bond for Susie's Cream Cheesecakes, Inc., back October 6 of 2015, that was pursuant to the original issuance in 2015. In that regard, the reason that this matter's being brought back before council now is for consideration to, again, accommodate an interest rate. There is some pending legislation, so Bond Council, the applicant, the project management has approached the city, asking to have this matter brought before the council, again, for the purpose of the city assisting with the issuance of these bonds to allow for a certain interest rate that is beneficial to the project, the developers in our city. So, there is no liability to the city. It's something which has been said at prior meetings and certainly tonight. This is to facilitate the project by way of the city being a partner in that financing without having any liability.
Questions? Comments? Okay, motion.
Bill will move to approve Resolution Number 11899-121917, a resolution authorizing amendments to 2.2 million City of Oak Creek, Wisconsin Industrial Revenue, Industrial Development Revenue Bonds, Series 2014, issued on February 27, 2014.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item number 12 is consideration of a rezone by John Thompson Summerstone LLC to rezone the properties at 7705, 7751, and 7831 South 13th from RS3 Single Family Residential to B4 Highway Business in the 1st District. Doug, you got this one? Oh, public hearing. Sorry. Jumped right ahead.
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by John Thompson Summerstone LLC to rezone the properties at 7705, 7751, and 7831 South 13th Street from RS3 Single Family Residential to B4 Highway Business. The applicant is John Thompson Summerstone LLC. Property owner is Sweet Demarb LLC. Rebecca R. Demarb is receiver for Drexel. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is November 22, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a public hearing request by Summerstone LLC for the properties that were mentioned, and you can see on your screen this evening. This request is in advance for pursuing a mixed-use plan, new development, or PUD that includes the two properties that were previously rezoned to B4 Highway Business in October of this year that's shown on the green on the map and the screen. Important to note that you'll see there are still some remaining properties along 13th Street, and to the extent that if these properties were ever to be acquired, it would be incorporated into that zoning and potentially that PUD and certified survey map as well. The B4 Highway Business zoning district, and this is from the code, is intended to provide for the orderly, attractive grouping at appropriate locations along federal, state, and county highway routes, those businesses and customer services, which are logically rated to, dependent upon highway traffic, or which are specifically designed to serve the need of such traffic. So, the parcels themselves, you can see this, are located along 13th Street, which is a county highway, and adjacent to I-94 and an interchange at Drexel Avenue. So, I think it's very appropriate that the zoning requests be taking place at this point in time. It matches all of those criteria. Again, this will ultimately be brought back to the Plan Commission Council in the form of what we believe to be a planning and development, where you'll have a little bit more, better idea with respect to site layout, buildings, what have you, and we can talk about that in generalities right now, but just know that the specifics will be forthcoming. We do have with us this evening Representative Developer Jimmy Rosen. I don't know, Jimmy, are you planning on saying anything this evening or not, but just important to note that, again, this is, the rezoning is just those properties, those three properties, which are shown on the red crosshatch, and later on, I believe, you'll be seeing a certified survey map that incorporates those into the larger parcel as well. So, this is a public hearing, and if anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning, we'd ask that you please fill out an appearance form, and when your name is called, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your comments or questions. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item 13, and that's consideration of the ordinance to rezone the properties that we just talked about in the public hearing. Questions, comments from council? Here? Yes? Doug, you said there's just three left that the folks are trying to acquire, those three properties?
There's three that aren't included in this rezoning petition or past rezoning petitions. I won't speculate as to the status of the, if there are negotiations taking place with those property owners, and I'll let Jimmy speak to that if he so desires.
Okay. You don't have to, you know. Please, if you're going to speak, we'll need you on the mic, please. Name and address.
Just right at the podium.
Sir?
Hold on, microphone.
Brookfield, Wisconsin, 53045. We've initiated contact, I think, for the three houses through a broker, and we close on Mr. Kurski's on Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Jimmy, sorry. Do you own the rest of the parcels in green already?
No, we are closing. We are closing probably by the end of the year. As soon as possible, maybe even Thursday, but by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the rezoning, obviously, is, given our vision for that, back of the woods is very appropriate. Obviously, we're, we'll be interested to see, Mr. Rosen, your teams, you're bringing what you could or intend to bring to that corner. Obviously, we have very high expectations, so we wait with a bead of breath for interesting proposals, so.
Motion on 13.
Kurski will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2888, an ordinance to rezone the properties at 7705, 7751, and 7831 South 13th Street from RS3 Single Family Residential to B4 Highway Business.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Item 14, consideration of Resolution Number 11898121917, approving a certified survey map for John Thompson Summerstone LLC for the properties at 7705, 7725, 7751, 7831, and 7869 South 13th Street.
Thank you. As promised, the CSM combines the three properties with the two that were previously combined via CSM, which result in one large property that would, again, presumably fall under the PUD designation that would be applied for in a subsequent meeting.
Questions? Comments? Go ahead, Ken.
Andrew or Doug, or I see engineering unfortunately is not here today, maybe from planning, you could comment, and Jimmy, maybe you could comment on this. Well, I am a little concerned on the item number one and the recommended approval with the conditions for the CSM, especially without having a good idea what we're looking at in terms of potential tenants or whether or not that lack of access to Drexel Avenue is going to be an encumbrance on your plans or potential tenants' plans. I'd be interested to hear if someone had comments from planning or engineering or developer on that point, so.
You want to take it, Doug?
Well, I think I can certainly speak to some of engineering staff's concerns regarding access in that location. Certainly, the access along Drexel Avenue, that location, and that short span between a full intersection at 13th Street and the on-off entrance to Drexel is challenging at best, and in cases where alternative access is available and safer and provides for better traffic flow, I think staff has consistently taken the opportunity to provide for corridors which provide for that safety and for that free flow of traffic. As to the specific requests of individual retailers or the property owners, I know they continue to look for solutions which would still afford the city the safety and the free flow of traffic that we are looking for to date. Staff just isn't comfortable if that's even possible under the conditions that exist out there right now.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, you can, you have more experience. If it's enshrined in the CSM currently, what it takes to undo it, if in fact we prefer to do it at some point in the future, depending upon a potential use.
Sure. And I think, just given the historical perspective and what's happened on the other side of the freeway, if the council so chooses and would like to essentially defer that to the PUD and site plans as they've done on the west side, I mean, certainly acknowledging that we're all cognizant that those challenges do exist and recognizing that staff doesn't feel that there should be any access there, I think there are, again, adequate safeguards or points along the process where those decisions can still be made, which will both still respect the opinions of staff as well as the potential deals that are out there in the marketplace.
Because I'm particularly concerned, you know, especially if you're pushing traffic off of the freeway, coming from either direction and pushing them up 13th Street, given it's only going to be a two-lane reconstruction, I'm not, I don't believe will be a signalized access point to Mr. Rosen's property. You're going to have traffic crossing, making left turns across.
If I can add to that, one more complication of it is there's actually a stoplight at 13th and Drexel, and as you make that left-hand turn, they really didn't want that crossover. And unlike the west side of the interstate, there's a cutout to make the right-hand turn onto the expressway, which shortens that approach even more. So, by putting an access point in there, staff really felt.
I know, engineering is supposed, I'm all aware of.
Without a doubt, it's a little bit of a different animal than the west side, and then the west side has its challenges also, don't get me wrong. You know, we're still.
I'm just concerned that if we include the memorialized CSM with this provision, it potentially hinder the potential marketability, especially if you're going north on 13th Street. I'm thinking 13th Street will still be a 40 mile an hour speed limit, making everyone needing to make a left turn across that traffic into his property. You have, you know, you have safety issues there, no matter what. So, and then no matter, people potentially, tenants potentially will, will have, will seek the best access for their particular venue, so.
Again, just based on staff's recommendation from distance from the corner where the stoplight is and the carve-out for the right-hand turn lane, they felt the approach was going to be way too short either way. That's why they denied.
I know, it's, I mean, they can make the recommendations.
Right. I agree, and I mean, from a marketability standpoint, I mean, if the greatest thing in the world came out and they were willing to make road accommodations to make that work, maybe it would be possible. But at this point in time, I would side with staff on this one.
And I appreciate the concerns and recognizing the challenges that exist. Again, and kind of recognizing that there may be creative solutions out there. I think that, Ken, you're absolutely correct that if this is a condition of approval of the CSM, then you're locked into it. And, you know, I think that, well, that's the right thing to do from the traffic perspective as we know it to be right now. I mean, if we did come up with alternative solutions that would, again, meet the needs of both developer and the city, we would have to go back and change the CSM. You can do that. Another method is, again, and just to throw it out there, is to put it on record about the concerns with respect to the corridor, but again, kind of defer that towards the PUD and site plan approval stage.
Did this come up, Dan, at the planning, the planning commissioner's standpoint?
It did, and we had the discussion, and it pretty much followed suit that, just from a DOT perspective or an engineering perspective, it really posed.
It is our road, so we have, we have some flexibility.
And again, I think the same comment was made, was reiterated, that Doug said, if need be, we can always go back to the drawing board and reverse it if the greatest thing in the world came forward with it, because you'd also probably be looking at a right-hand carve-out for that turn.
I can imagine a right-hand. I can imagine a right-in is the only thing you'd accept as potential. Any interest to your Mr. Rosen's thoughts on that particular issue? If he has no issue, then I have no issue.
I don't have any issues right now at this point when you address it in the PUD. We're exploring some options with the traffic study right now.
You don't have a good thought on what kind of traffic flow you'd prefer, is that what you're saying?
Well, we obviously like one off Drexel, but we've paid to engage a study to see if that's something that Oak Creek is fine with, as well as the retailers. But we would address it in the PUD.
Currently, though, that was discussed at planning commission, like the mayor said, and based upon the staff's recommendation, when you look at, I agree that we do need to look at what's best for, best case scenario for this property, but I think we have to look at what the staff is saying.
I mean, given what's in front of us is what we have right now. Again, if he does want to do a traffic analysis, comes back and he has something that's just outstanding to reconsider that intersection, but otherwise, right now, we have, we have serious traffic concerns at that intersection. We don't want to complicate it.
I don't want to limit the potential of the property either by having a cumbersome traffic restriction.
Again, I don't think at this point in time the restriction's that great, and if it proves to be that great, we can go back to square one. But right now, I don't want to leave it open on a maybe. I'd rather take the safety and concerns of staff before a maybe. That's my opinion.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I appreciate your comments, Ken. I was just sitting back here trying to visualize any potential issues, and I know this is extremely premature with regards to ideas and suggestions, but you did make the comment about possibly only a right-in and a right-out.
Going allow any out.
Well, I mean, and then, you know, potentially no U-turn allowed at the traffic light, so but it's going to be very challenging, as Doug said, but we could always move forward tonight, and then if we have to come back and change things because something won't work, we can, we can always do that, too.
I just want to make sure we're pondering and not limiting the property by being over restricted.
Well, I think we've, I think we've stated our concerns with regards to a very, you know, challenging part of the road there.
Okay. Seeing none, where were we, motion? Bukowski will make a motion to council adopt resolution number 11898-121917, a resolution approving a certified survey map for John Thompson Summerstone LLC for the properties at 7705, 7725, 7751, 7831, and 7869, South 13th Street.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukowski.
Aye.
Item 15 is a code amendment, consideration of proposed amendment to section 17.1402 to include the definition of a beauty shop.
Public hearing number three is to consider a proposed amendment to section 17.1402 to include the definition of a beauty shop, date of notice November 8, 2017.
Great, Doug?
Recently, the city became aware of some new cosmetology services which are being conducted within the city and elsewhere, known as microblading and micropigmentation. So these types of services provide customers the opportunity to have semi or permanent makeup applied to their face. These are licensed by the state as tattooing services, and the city court identifies tattooing as a conditional use in the B2 and B4 zoning districts. However, the court does not make any distinction between tattoo studio, microblading, or micropigmentation. Since these relatively new, at least new to Oak Creek, techniques are associated more with a beauty parlor, beauty shop, more so than a traditional tattoo studio, staff is proposing to add a definition of a beauty shop to include facial microblading and facial micropigmentation, and which would also exclude tattoo and piercing studios and massage therapy. We did include some information as to some background on microblading as part of the staff report as well. So this amendment would allow those types of businesses that provide cosmetology services, and there is actually one in Drexel Town Square that currently offers a service, to allow or to offer microblading and facial micropigmentation without the requirement of having to get a conditional use permit for a tattoo studio. The planning commission has recommended approval of this proposed amendment, and as this is a public hearing, we would ask anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed text amendment, which allows microblading and micropigmentation as part of the definition for a beauty shop, to fill out an appearance form, and when called, please address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. This will be the first. Second call. Third and final call. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to consideration number 16, consideration of ordinance number 28, amending section 17.104 of the municipal code to include the definition of a beauty shop. Questions, comments from council? We had quite an education at planning about this.
We did.
We learned quite a bit. But it is needed, again. Times are changing, different services are being provided within cosmetology, and these are two of them. So we need to roll with the times and update our codes. With that, motion.
And just because Alderman Lorick's not here, don't read anything into it.
You'll move to approve ordinance 2892, amending section 17.1402 of the municipal code to include the definition of a beauty shop.
Bukowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 17, consideration of a proposed amendment to section 17.03170, sub G, sub 1, to reduce the front yard setbacks for a building from 30 feet to 25 feet, 25 feet in the LM1 Limited Manufacturing District. Catherine?
Public hearing number four is a hearing to consider a proposed amendment to section 17.03170, sub G, sub 1, to reduce the front yard setback for a building from 30 feet to 25 feet in the LM1 Limited Manufacturing District, date of notice is November 8, 2017.
Thank you. Recently, the city adopted a new LM1 Limited Manufacturing zoning district, and this district was intended to serve as a transition between our traditional manufacturing zoning district and some of our higher intensity commercial districts. And as such, the initial zoning district had a setback which is more akin to manufacturing zoning district, which was 30 feet. As we have a little experience with the district and some potential uses that would be locating in them, staff feels that it's more appropriate to allow for a setback which is closer to is actually equal to the setback in the B4 zoning district, which is 25 feet, instead of the 30 feet which is required under the M1 zoning district. And this text amendment would allow for the front setback in the LM1 district to be 25 instead of the 30 feet. If anyone has any questions or comments, please feel free to address council with your questions or comments. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Now close the public hearing and move on to item 18, which is consideration of ordinance 2893 to repeal and recreate section 1703, 170, sub G, sub 1 of the municipal code to reduce the minimum setback from 30 feet to 25 feet from the right-of-way of all public streets in an LM1 limited district. Questions? Chris?
This was pretty straightforward at planning commission, and everyone was in favor of it. Made complete sense. Again, it just shows, when you look at our codes and everything, just how out of whack some of the things are. And as noted here, when we created the zoning, this was the first, so they need to update that and correct it.
Yeah, I think Doug stated it very well. After looking at the new zoning, it's really just an adjustment as to what'll work better. Seeing nothing else, motion.
You'll move to approve ordinance 2893 to repeal and recreate section 17.03170, sub G, sub 1 of the municipal code to reduce the minimum setback from 30 feet to 25 feet from the right-of-way of all public streets in the LM1 Limited Manufacturing District.
Bukowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Bukowski.
Aye.
Bukowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Now, if you all would please move ahead to item 23, I'd like to move up there. And that's consideration of ordinance 2885, an ordinance confirming adoption of a successor labor agreement by and between the city of Oak Creek and the Professional Police Officers Association, and fixing the salary for members of the association from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2020. Andrew?
Thanks, Mayor. I can start off a little bit, and then we'll turn it over to Rob, and he can give a little more color to the bargaining process with the Professional Police Association. It was a, it was a pretty, pretty good, nice, comfortable bargain, considering we had a lot of new faces on both sides of the table. For the sake of providing some highlights to those tuning in, in the end, we really focused in on a wage proposal, this contract, and I have to first commend the bargaining committee and the council of past. There was a lot of substantial effort on reforming post-employment benefits, the last couple of bargains, health insurance, retiree health insurance, active employee health insurance. It made for a pretty easier paved pathway for this bargain, and hopefully the same with the fire union, which we've commenced here recently as well. So, you know, many kudos to you for that work and getting that out of, you know, out of my way before I became your administrator. I really appreciate that. But for high-level overview on the wage settlement with the Professional Police Association, January 1 of 18, this will be a three-year contract, I should note, January 1 of 18, a 1.5% increase in wages. January 1 of 19, a 1%, and then July 1 of 19, a 1%, so a split wage pattern in the second year. And then in January, on January 1 of 2020, a 2.25% wage increase. Overall, we were pretty pleased with that wage settlement. We found that to be favorable to the city and the taxpayers of Oak Creek. There were a couple other substantive, I guess you could call them items, which I'll let Rob kind of cover. But in terms of an overall fiscal impact for the presently 44 represented employees in this bargaining unit, that's about a $245,000 impact over three years. So, you know, really, 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 again, favorable. We all came away pretty pleased with the way both sides represented their perspectives at the table this time around. And with that, I'll be happy to turn it over to Rob, so he can show his wares in this deal, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Rob Buchamo, the labor attorney for the city. I won't tell you for how long, because that would date me, but I want to thank Alderman Toman and Gale and Dukenyak and Andrew and Becky, Chief Anderson and Captain Stecker for making a great team. You already heard about the wages. I think it gives us a three-year look, some certainty for budgeting purposes, and I guess you could determine whether or not we're in a time of increasing inflation or not, but I think it's something that I think is fair. I would characterize our settlement as being a give and take. It's never something that you're completely satisfied with, but on the other hand, you have to give something to get something. And we were able to also enhance our probationary period, extending it from 12 months to 18 months, which is something that the chief really wanted to look at, because there's so much more training that goes on outside of the agency now, and so that should be very, very useful. There's also an introduction of some flexible language, a concept that the chief wants to look at in terms of more flexible scheduling, and if we can work with the union on that during the term of the contract and get that implemented, we have the freedom to do that. And then, obviously, you got to give something up, and we had to do something on vacation, get them a little bit more vacation a little bit earlier, which is consistent with our comparables, but then also in exchange, we got a cap which is consistent with our comparables as well. Other than that, there was some very, very fine language adjustments, which is going to make the contract better. Overall, we're very pleased to have this done before the end of the year.
Questions for Rob?
We didn't even need to call on the mayor, who's got a lot of experience with these things as well.
No, it's always great to come out of there with an agreement of some sort, and it says a lot on both sides. And you're correct, both sides, it is a give and take. In the end, we all work together as a team and decide where to go and how to get things done, and I'm glad to see you guys accomplish this. On a four-year, it's very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice. It gives some continuity to the city, opens up some things for the chief, and provides some well-do compensation for rank and file, so.
Correct.
Just comments, Rob, thanks for your efforts here. Andrew and Becky, chief, and David, obviously, we appreciate your time and effort you put into the process. I think overall, from a committee standpoint, we feel we struck a fairly good bargain for the city in terms of balance, in terms of what we gave for salary and flexibility we garnered for the city in terms of some of the caps and the vacation and time off, and overall, in terms of what we believe was a fair salary in this environment. Appreciate your efforts, and I think it was a good process.
Anything else? Okay. Motion, please.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2885, an ordinance confirming adoption of successor labor agreement by and between the city of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Professional Police Officers Association, and fixing the salary for members of the association from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2020.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukowski.
Aye.
Bukowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Great. If we could all, please go back to item 19.
Thanks so much. Have a great holiday, everyone. A great year.
If we could all, please go back to item 19. It's informational only. Council report is in front of you. I know Barb cannot be with us, it is tax season, but we do have Bridget here that can graciously help out if there are any questions concerning our investment or banking accounts. Anyone questions, concerns? Much month-to-month what we see? Seeing none, motion on 19. Oh, I'm sorry, it was informational only. If everybody's done and satisfied, we'll move on to 20. Okay. That is, item 20 is consideration of a resolution approving a welfare plan service agreement in and between the city of Oak Creek and the Benefit Administration System, LLC, for a third-party administration of the city's self-funded health plan. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will draw your attention to the staff report wherein it recounts some of the history here with the city deciding to change its TPA or its third-party administrator for its, for its self-funded health insurance plan. You made that decision back in, at your September, one of your September meetings, in that staff report outlining the reasons and rationale and city benefits of making that change after a very long tenure with UMR. It was promised to you that at a future meeting, we would be approving the actual third-party administration contract. So that's what's before you this evening. I know it's labeled welfare plan services agreement, but that is just nomenclature for the TPA contract with BAS or Benefit Administrative Systems out of Chicago. I should just recount, too, for you that the decision to go forward with BAS was a result of a competitive bidding process. There's certainly, as it's put in the fiscal report, a $60,000 savings, but what the city staff, really a health insurance committee that we're working group, what we are driving at is more meaningful changes through providing a more diverse and innovative array of vendor solutions. And one of those, one of those vendor solutions is a firm called Amps, which is a medical billing review solution. Our current, then-current TPA, UMR, did not work with, with. Our current, then-current TPA, UMR, did not work with Amps on that. So, in order to open the gate and enable the city to produce some meaningful cost controls and potential savings over time here with health insurance costs, the move to a different third-party administrator became necessary. So with that, we're sweeping up a little bit after the parade tonight on trying to get this contract done as we go live with BAS here January 1. We've had a pretty fairly seamless open enrollment period with BAS, but as is the case with anything in terms of changing your third-party administrator here, we'll see some bumps in the road along the way and we'll smooth those out as a group and with really good communication with the employees. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Andrew? Comments? Ken?
Just as a member of the finance committee, I think we had the luxury of having an early look at this process and having some of our consultants actually give some presentations to the committee and the legwork Bridget and Andrew did on this project and the rest of the staff that were involved in the insurance reviews, it was really commendable. You know, in the private sector, we see this stuff regularly, so bringing it to the public sector, I know is a little more dicey situation, so, but I believe given the choices and the scrutiny that we've put this process through, I think employees, especially with no premium increases this year, I think is unusual in and of itself, I guess, and no plan changes necessarily speaking, and as our insurance fund has continued to stabilize, I think these moves that we're making are very appropriate. We're on this path forward to manage our healthcare expenses.
Anyone else? Seeing none, motion?
It will move to approve resolution 11880-121917, approving a welfare plan services agreement by and between the city of Oak Creek and Benefit Administrative Systems LLC for the third-party administration of the city's self-funded health insurance plan.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 21 is consideration of resolution number 11895-121917, a resolution approving a second amendment to the city of Oak Creek marketing magazine services contract. Leslie's with us here to explain this one.
This is just a second amendment to the original contract for our Oak Creek current magazine. The only minor changes are the dates generally, so this will be for the 2018 year, years' worth of magazines, there will be four. The city's contribution remains the same. The stakeholders have changed slightly, we have lost two, Wispark and Wire Development have decided they don't want to contribute this year, so it doesn't affect our contribution or how magazine will be structured. It may have a slight reduction in page count, but we have increased, I think from the original 32 pages all the way up to 48, so it's just a balance of content and advertising and that's managed by our publisher, Kapral Designs. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, questions, comments for Leslie? Steve? Leslie, I can wait, no problem. Come on, Arden.
I was completely discombobulated.
Name and address, Arden.
Oh, Arden Dexter, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. When I received a copy of the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce with a tremendous glossy fold-out map that hadn't been updated in three or four years, they did not even show any access to the lakefront at all. And here it's supposed to be paid for by, and therefore, I don't understand, and they said that this is all contract done, but if a contract does not show updated the money that we've spent on Lake Vista, why isn't that a part of that contract? And I just thought I'd emphasize updating any of this PR.
Okay, just to be clear, the Chamber of Commerce is their own entity, that misprint was on the Chamber, not the current magazine. So, that was up to them to get their information right, to double-check it or proofread it, so to speak. The current, we have a pretty good editor there in Leslie, making sure things go in there correctly and are updated. I myself have gotten nothing but positive comments. I think it was really, really needed and appreciated, that magazine going out to the city. I've yet to hear anything negative about it, quite frankly. Steve?
I did have a, I had an email maybe six, eight months ago from resident manager from one of the apartment complexes in my district, wanted to know how do we find out what's going on in the city for all the residents in the complex? And I told her that we had this magazine, that they would be, that all the residents would get one because it's going to every address in the city. So, I never heard back from her saying that it was good or bad, but I'm, you know, no news is good news. But Leslie, is the, you get any feedback from any of the small advertisers, like are they happy with, are they getting services, are they getting business, I mean, anything like that you can share?
We don't actually deal with the advertising, the publisher takes care of all that, but she has received tremendous feedback about advertising. We have, I mean, she has a waiting list of people who want to advertise, so it's been very well received. And obviously, we have to balance out the number of ads to the actual written content, so I mean, she said she could expand the magazine by many more pages just to reflect interest in advertising. So, I think it's been very well received in the community and people continue to advertise, so I'm assuming that if they weren't getting any bang for their buck, they would withdraw their advertising.
And this, Steve, I can, oh go. This may or may not be, it may or may not be an answer to this, but with regards to some of the things that happen in our city, I mean, we have featured stories from, you know, certain things and stuff like that, but with regards to residents and, you know, new residents that come in, and is there a possibility, if maybe you could relay this on to the folks, that we have a multitude of youth sports organizations in the city that are hamstrung by their abilities to get the word out because of, you know, protocols and procedures with various, you know, functions here in the city and the school district? So, you know, like Little League, youth football, wrestling club, soccer club, I mean, is there, see if there's a way where we can get those community organizations a little bit of free advertising?
Absolutely. Yeah, we've talked about in trying to expand our list of who we reach out to, get information into the magazine, so we're always looking.
And if this could work, I mean, they'd have to think ahead of schedule, like for right now would be Little League and then, you know, April would be youth football and I don't know about the wrestling and soccer club, but okay, thank you.
Steve, in answer to your question about small businesses and the impact that the advertising has on them, I used to work for a small business, nonprofit organization in Oak Creek, and we took advantage of the advertising program that was offered by the magazine. I can say the response to our advertising in those issues was incredible and incredibly cost-effective as well. We used to do a direct mailing to each household in Oak Creek as well, in order to convey information about programs and advertising about the community center in general. That direct mailing that we undertook cost us approximately five times what an ad in the current magazine would cost. So, not only, and it's more professionally packaged as well, so for small businesses, and Leslie, I don't doubt that there is a waiting list, it's an incredibly professional package that's put out and at a great price as well. So, yeah, it's been effective, at least from my experience.
Right. Anyone else?
Anything well spent?
Okay. All right, seeing none, motion?
Oh, Kirkowski, make a resolution, make a motion to approve resolution number 11895-121917, a resolution approving a second amendment to the city of Oak Creek marketing magazine services contract.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 22 is consideration of resolution number 11896-121917, a resolution authorizing a second contract extension to the amendment to the city of Oak Creek contract specifications for the 2015-2016 private property maintenance projects. Melissa? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is just as the mayor indicated, this is a second extension to the property maintenance contract. The contract has been in effect since January of 2015. The council approved the fact at the inception that we could extend this contract. The contractor on board is Robbie's Grading LLC. We have already communicated with the contractor, we have the signed second amendment, if approved by council. This second extension, similar to the last item, as Leslie explained with the marketing magazine contract for the current, this is an extension for one year. The term would end December 31 of 2018. And in that regard, I can tell you that I conferred with the city engineer before tonight's meeting and he indicated that we have enlisted the services three or four times over the years that we have been working with this contractor. The city engineer, Mike Simmons, said that the contractor has always been responsive when called upon and is very easy to work with. As part of what our code enforcement group had come up with almost 10 years ago, was something along these lines, so this was a result of that. And I think that this time of year, we certainly, with the leaves coming off the trees, take a look around the community to see how we can make sure that as staff, we are enforcing our code to the betterment of all the citizens, so this is part of that effort.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments for Melissa? Seeing none, motion?
It will move to approve resolution 11896-121917, a resolution authorizing a second contract extension and addendum to the city of Oak Creek contract specifications for 2015-16, is that correct, Melissa?
Yes.
Private property maintenance projects.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Having covered item 23, we'll move to 24, and that's consideration of motion to concur with the mayor's appointments as filed to Park and Rec. Questions? For the appointment of Leah Schreiber Johnson? Seeing none, motion?
It will move to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item 25 is consideration of resolution number 11894-121917, authorizing payments of bills, debts, and obligations.
Only having one meeting in the month of January, we will still pay bills, cut the checks on January 3rd after we are back from the holidays, so this is just allowing us to do that.
Still make us do that, eh?
People still want to get paid, I know. You can see by the next item, the sizable checks that we cut here at the end of the year.
Yes, it is the end of the year, so with that, a motion please.
It will move to approve resolution 11894-121917, authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item number 26 is a motion to approve the vendor summary report in amount of $2,165,419.70. Please direct any questions to Bridget. Bridget, item number eight, is that, usually mics here, is that their last construction draw?
So, just for Mike, he left me some really kind handwritten notes in case you have questions.
Oh, good luck.
Which is really kind of him, but he said just the pavilion is left to finish, will be done by the end of March, so that was his update on number eight.
And just another point of interest, item 15 is a sizable bill for relocation project of railroad signals. We undertook that some years ago over here on Poots. Many residents asked to have those redone. Really see what a cost that is to work with the railroads to get those redone. Very expensive.
You said number 15?
Number 15.
15, yes, so that was the city's cost share for the Fifth Avenue and we received 2.71 million for grant funding for that project, so. Largest of the Lake Vista grants for that road.
Any other questions, comments?
I mean, Mayor, you can see, obviously, 2.1 is a big ticket, but a million six at least if it's affiliated with the lakefront project, so.
Yeah.
Big numbers involved down there, but, you know, it is what it is.
One day it'll be a deal. Yeah, actually, it probably is. Seeing nothing else, motion please.
It will move to approve the vendor's summary report in the amount of $2,165,419.70.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
27 concerns Public Works and its consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of a 2017 Swayzer, Swayzar, did I say that? A1 sweeper on a Kenworth K370 chassis from Arnow Inc. in the amount of $245,029.50. Ted?
Oh, Schwars.
Schwars?
If, for those of you on the council last year, if you recall, we did a pretty extensive search for sweepers last year. We actually went and test drove a number of sweepers from the four major manufacturers that make them, as well as went and visited a number of places, different communities and public works and the county, and got feedback on the different sweepers. From that, basically, we used a criteria that's listed here with compliance with the NR216 permit, performance price, customer referrals, and available parts and service to make our decision. And if you recall, last year, we also were able to pick up a demo sweeper, which saved us some money on our purchase. We are fortunate enough this year to have the opportunity to buy another demo, which will save us about $23,500 on the purchase of a new sweeper. We feel that having the same sweeper is a benefit to us, for one, we're happy with the performance of it and went through a lot of work to get the one that we really liked and as well as, these are high-maintenance pieces of equipment, and so we will only have to stock parts for one sweeper, so we won't have to have a whole lot of different parts. And the training that is needed for both the operators and the mechanics will be for one piece of equipment, which we actually did send our head mechanic and one of our other mechanics down to Huntsville, Alabama for a four-day training class on repair and maintenance of them. And with this, if this is approved this evening, we'll actually have an opportunity to send two more individuals down to that class to have them trained.
Questions for Ted?
Ted, I've got one question. There's the listing of a 201 hours and 7,000 miles, the demo sweeper that we're going to be getting, what is the typical useful life in terms of hours and miles for a sweeper? You mentioned our, one that we're getting rid of has 16 years on it, but what does that have in terms of hours and miles?
Well, I would really have to look and get back to you on that one. I guess the best answer I'd have on that, it would be a lot, but, at least for right now, but I certainly could give you that information.
Okay, just wondering, is this 2% or 1%?
Yeah, no, this is, this is pretty minimal.
It is, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Bridget, can you just recap, uh, Ted's got allocated 245K from CEP, that money is uh, sourced from?
Stormwater funds? So we've utilized stormwater funds for the purchase of the last sweeper as well as this one. Continuing to have the stormwater fund aid in some of those activities that help alleviate the gravel, I have no technical word for gravel, dirt, that are getting into the basin.
The minor stormwater fee increases we've had are directly attributable to the need to purchase these two units.
Need to purchase them as well as to set up a capital equipment reserve for the stormwater fund.
Right. Anyone else? Motion.
We'll move to approve the purchase of a 2017 Shores A9 sweeper on a Kenworth K370 chassis from Arnow Inc. in the amount of $245,029.50.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 28 concerns water and sewer, the water and sewer utility. It's a resolu, it's consideration of resolution number 11892121917, resolution granting to We Energies, six-foot wide permanent easement for a national natural gas service feeding, a standby generator owned by Verizon Wireless adjacent to the Sycamore Water Tower on the utility property at 2611 West Sycamore Avenue. Ron?
Good evening, Ron Pritzloff, Oak Creek Water and Sewer 170 West Drexel Avenue. Uh, this is nothing earth shattering here, this is fairly standard procedure for We Energies. Uh, what they've done is, there's a couple of wrinkles in the, in this uh, the sequence of how this is done. Typically, the easement is granted first before construction, in this case, that, that is not the case, uh, as far as this, this particular uh, service goes. Uh, if you're, if you've ever been up by Sycamore Tower, 27th and uh, Sycamore, we have a very small driveway that leads up to that tower. Uh, there's a multitude of utilities in there, including a, a critical water main that feeds that tower, as well as fiber optic, gas, and power. As you get onto the site, uh, through the fence, the spaghetti effect gets even worse. So when they initially submitted this, I wasn't confident at all that they could stay within that easement, uh, and I required them to actually install the gas line first. Um, and then that way, we know the easement is centered on top of the, on top of the service and we're all set to go. So that's how that, the sequence of how this went down. Uh, secondly, it's only a six-foot easement, uh, normally that's a, it's a non-standard easement, so um, normally you see something larger than that. In this case, because of all those utilities, we needed a smaller easement. And um, it feeds a, a backup generator for Verizon Wireless's equipment that's on our tower. Uh, that tower, or that, that generator also is a backup to some of our systems that we have on that tower. So um, I would recommend, uh, go ahead and uh, grant the easement, it's uh, fairly standard here.
Right, questions for Ron? Ron, it's interesting, some of our equipment will actually be fed in an emergency to uh, to run off Verizon's generator.
Yeah, Verizon was nice enough, uh, we made an agreement with them that uh, there was some, some electrical work that needed to be done, but we made an agreement with them that uh, should, should main power fail, that we can operate on their standby generator.
Very good.
Instead of a battery backup, so.
Right. Um, seeing no questions, motion.
Kirkowski will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11892-121917, a resolution granting to We Energies, a six-foot wide permanent easement for a natural gas service feeding, a standby generator owned by Verizon Wireless, adjacent to the Sycamore Water Tower on the utility property 2611 West Sycamore Avenue.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Next, we have Community Development. Item 29 is consideration of resolution number 11900-121917, approving a certified survey map for Bradley Schmidt for the property at 810 East Oakwood Road. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, you'd like to say a few words?
Brad Schmidt, 7981 South 20th Street. Does anybody have any questions? I really don't have to say too much.
Uh, no, I mean, we did, we did go over it at planning. Uh, I think Brian was pretty good with you. He was gonna close off the driveway on Oakwood. Uh, I'm Shepherd.
I mean, I was actually confused at the meeting, there's two driveways, one comes off of Oakwood, one comes off of Shepherd. I think the one that they're referencing in here is, was the one that I was not talking about, but I'm gonna get rid of both, so.
Okay.
And that's gonna come in with building of the houses, that those driveways will be eliminated.
Correct, and I, I, but I do believe each driveway is gonna come off. Oakwood and yet.
Shepherd.
Shepherd.
Both driveways will come off, because one lot doesn't even touch Oakwood. One lot just, the right, the right away is only on Shepherd.
Yeah, you're correct.
So both driveways will come off of Shepherd. There is currently a driveway that comes off of Oakwood, uh, and then they were, uh, planning was talking about the northerly driveway of Lot 1, which is actually on the owner to the north's property as it comes into the lot, so I mean, that's, it's not really a driveway, it's like more of a just beaten down path that the owner of the, the previous owner was just using, which obviously with side setbacks and whatnot, that's going to disappear.
And then the buildings were ready raised, one was.
Correct, there is zero buildings on his property, everything's been taken care of and.
Yeah.
Brad, you got a notion of what you're gonna put on the property in terms of size and value of the buildings?
Yeah, if uh, you'd like to see the house that I build, I'd, I've built a, a few amount of houses in Oak Creek, uh, Kinder Avenue, there's a cul-de-sac, I did those two houses in there. Uh, that's the ranch style that I like to build. Those two houses are actually pretty close in design on the inside, but if you look at the outside, they're quite different. That's what I plan to do here, is have a ranch-style home, um, pretty close in the interior design, but obviously have the exterior design be different, so. I know there was a concern of one of the neighbors at the planning meeting that they were wondering what I was gonna be building, a two-story or ranch, and obviously they didn't want the, you know, I'm sure they're looking for the, the height and the blockage of the sun coming from the west, but yeah, ranch, ranch-style homes. 2,000 square feet.
What are you doing with the um, the property screen? Bro, you gonna, there you go.
The, the rear of the property would be the east, has a row of hedges that I love to keep, because there's a neighbor in the back.
These make sense, the one on the hedge.
The front, I'm trying to, there's a, there's about five trees in front, I believe their maple trees are beautiful, I mean, they're 80 years old, I'm no tree expert, but I'd say they're 80, the, the way their height is. I'd love to keep those, so I'm gonna try to design the driveways to uh, pass by those larger trees. The hedges in the front, I'm undecided. Shepherd being a busier road, I might keep them and just cut a driveway through, but at this point, it's, it's all in how much of the construction of the, the driveways and the sewer and water to the northerly lot is gonna take out those hedges if they start to get thinned out, it's not gonna make sense for me to keep them.
Gonna build them both at the same time, or when's your conception?
Probably not, but they will be completed in one calendar year. So I probably would start construction on both of them in 2019. I have other lots in Oak Creek that I'm going, I plan to build on in 18, so these probably won't start till, till uh, 19.
You okay waiting that long, or?
I mean, the, the CSM, the lots we updated to record that, there is no uh, time limit during which you ask, ask the bill that's the land division will go through.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Great, thank you, Brad.
All right, thank you.
All right. Good luck, Brad.
Thank you. And uh, compliment that, that young man that was here about his building and all that, I plan to build these and I'll look into what his concerns were with that, um, you know, ramp and.
Stoop, yeah.
Yeah, the stoop and it, it makes complete sense, I could follow along completely what he was talking about.
Right. All right, motion.
We'll move to.
Oh, did you have something?
Oh, I just.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Ken. Gil, move to approve resolution 11900-121917, approving a certified survey map for Bradley Schmidt for the property at 810 East Oakwood Road.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
It gets us to the licensing committee and I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. The license committee did not meet prior to the council meeting, tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 30, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the three individuals listed on the agenda, favorable background reports received.
Duke Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 31, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license to Roland Komorowski, agent, St. Matthew Parish School, 9303 and 9329 South Chicago Road, for a chili cook-off to be held on February 3rd, 2018.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 33, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant a 2018 dog kennel license to Bradley Osgood, Brentwood Animal Hospital, 318 West Ryan Road, with issuance subject to final departmental approvals.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Item 34, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant a 2007, would that be a typographical error before I go further? Should it be 2018 license?
It should be.
Okay. Well then, uh, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a 2018 mobile home park license to Fifth Avenue Development Group LLC, DBA Sunrise Shores, 8481 South Fifth Avenue, TCSC LLC, DBA Highview Mobile Home Court, 2331 West College Avenue, Joseph and Ellen Dentez, DBA Oak Creek Estates, 2137 through 2301 West College Avenue, with issuance subject to final departmental approvals.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 35, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant a 2018 secondhand article dealer, secondhand jewelry dealer license to Richard Radke, agent, Oak Creek Currency and Coin, 616 East Ryan Road, with issuance subject to final departmental approvals.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 36, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant a 2018 secondhand article dealer license to Troy W. Crawford, agent, GameStop, number 6246, at 8171 South Howell Avenue, number 300, with issuance subject to final departmental approvals.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 37, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant a change of agent to QuickTrip, DBA, QuickTrip, number 976, 6300 South 27th Street, from James J. Bod to Dawn M. Cost, 2607 West Ramsey Avenue, Milwaukee, favorable background report received.
Niack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And finally, item number 38, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant a 2017, 2018 Class A beer, Class A liquor, cider only, license to Aminder Basray, agent, Ryan Road Mobile LLC, DBA Ryan Road Mobile, 9444 South Chicago Road, with issuance subject to receipt of occupancy permit.
Niack, second.
Roll call. Before you deny on the question, uh, do you have any background on that one, Steve? Is there a change in ownership there, or is that just a formality?
I have no information other than what's printed on the agenda.
All right, I'll inquire on it. Okay, thanks. Uh, roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.